Buenas tardes, el siguiente mensaje será repetido en español enseguida. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comments. At the end of the meeting, there is a second and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak during the first call, we encourage you to stay until the end. To request to participate in public comment, please raise your hand by clicking on the participant button at the bottom of your screen and please raise your hand now. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until a public comment begins, you will not get to speak and you will have to wait until the end of the meeting. When called upon, you will be promoted to a panelist, which means that you will appear on screen. So if you do not wish to be on camera, please be sure to disable the camera on your end. The board president will usually call our students first. So students who are here tonight for public comment, please indicate that you are a student by writing "students" at the end of your name. Board president will also determine to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker and on an individual basis have the discretion to allow for additional time for those who need translation or have other needs. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Brown holds up a sign letting you know you have fifteen seconds left. If you are still speaking, please complete your sentence with trying not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Reporcionare un breve resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión después de los procedimientos preliminares. Un periodo de media hora será dedicado a comentarios del público. Por favor, levantar la mano ya si desea participar en la primera llamada de comentario público. Si se espera levantar su mano, tendrá que esperarse hasta el final de la junta. Para comentar por videoconferencia, haga clic en el botón "participantes" en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione "levantar la mano" o "raise your hand". Para participar vía teléfono, por favor de levantar la mano presionando estrella nueve. Al ser llamado llamada, aparecerá en cámaras o si no desea aparecer en pantalla, a favor de apagar su cámara. El presidente otorgará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y puede llamar a los estudiantes primero. O si hay estudiantes que desean participar esta noche, a favor de indicar que son estudiantes al escribir "estudiantes" al final de su nombre. Usualmente, el presidente otorgará tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o otras adaptaciones especiales. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, verá la vicepresidenta levantar un signo indicando que le faltan quince segundos. Si todavía está hablando, a favor de terminar su oración pero tratar de no sobrepasarse de su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:04. For the record, we started closed session at 5:30 tonight. Welcome everybody to the June twenty-third meeting of the Berkeley School Board, our last meeting of the school year. As Ms. Torres said, if you'd like to give public comment, now is the time to raise your hand. Once we start public comment, if you raise your hand, you'll have to wait until the end of the meeting when we'll have another public comment period. So if you'd like to make public comment again, now is the time to raise your hand. Ms. Torres, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Director Vasudev.
Presente.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Vice President Kadija Brown.
Present.
President Alper.
Present. Thank you. Now we will approve the meeting agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Moved.
Motion by Vice President Brown. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Director Vasudev. Ms. Torres.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
And President.
Yes. All right. Thank you. We have our agenda. I will now turn it over to Vice President Brown to report out from closed session.
Thank you, President Alper. Closed session began at 5:32 PM. For item 3.1.1, it was moved by Director Sinai, seconded by Vice President Brown, and the motion passed four to zero with Director Babbitt in abstention. For item 3.2.1, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.3.1, it's moved by President Alper, seconded by Director Vasudev, and the motion passed five to zero. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Stevens, who will give us an introduction and update.
Vice President Brown, thank you very much. I'm very happy to welcome to the Berkeley family of the administrative team Kathy Fleming. Kathy is here in the audience this evening and just listening in. Kathy has just been appointed by the Board of Education to be the new Director of Local Resources and Partnerships. This is a new position that takes the place of the former Director of BSEP and Community Relations. This is the job that many of us know has been held for a long time and done so effectively by Ms. Natasha Berry, who's also in our audience this evening. Kathy Fleming is coming to us from San Francisco Unified, where she has a long range of experience in activities exactly like the role of the new Director of Local Resources. In San Francisco, Ms. Fleming was the Director of the Public Education Enrichment Fund for many years, where she supported the effective use of public parcel tax dollars for enrichment programs across the city for many years. She's an East Bay local, very close by, and we're very glad to be welcoming her to the BUSD team. So Kathy, welcome to you. We're really glad to have you onboard. And then it absolutely must be said that Natasha, we're going to miss you dearly. And so while we welcome one person, we do have to sort of mark the departure of another. So Vice President Brown, I'm gonna turn it back over to you and thank you to you and all of the board for your support.
Thank you so much for that introduction. And welcome Kathy. For item 3.4, the board heard an update and also provided direction and listens the reading of the notes from closed session. Thank you, President Alper.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. Next, oh, next is public comment. Okay. Again, this is your last chance to raise your hand for public comment until the next public comment period at the end of the meeting. All right. We've got four people. Vice President Brown, they can have three minutes each. It's Angelaga Diego Castillo, Mr. La Chuga, Mark Joseph Ramia, and then Paz Melendez Canales. So those are our four public commentators, and we'll start with Ms. Diego Castillo.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good evening. Hi. Good evening, Directors, Superintendent, and Public. My name is Dr. Angelaga Diego Castillo, and I will be reading a statement that I also endorse that has been written by Beatriz Leva Cutler, past board member. Honorable Board Members, Superintendent, and the esteemed parents and public that are listening to tonight's board meeting. I am sorry that I am unable to join you as I have a family matter that prevents me from speaking to you tonight in person. My name is Beatriz Leva Cutler, and I was formerly on the school board for twelve years. I learned that when a newly elected board comes together, it takes time as you only meet in public and/or in closed session to understand, question, and solve issues and concerns together. Board members can only speak to one another about an item, and if it is not on the agenda, if it's not on the agenda, they cannot bring up an issue either in public or in closed session. I trust this board and that each person elected has an equity and social justice lens in public and in closed session. I trust that they do approach the work before then with this lens each and every time. I think we can all agree that these past few months and years have been extremely difficult for all. I feel that the board with the superintendent and district staff are building and sailing the ship at the same time, and it makes it more difficult when some people use their platform and position to create divisiveness between board members and the public that does not exist. I am confident that if you ask any board member, they will say they respect each other and each other's work in our school and community. Yes, board members will have different opinions and approaches, and I also believe that the board before you want the same thing for all students: equitable education. I joined the community in endorsing each sitting board member in their election and appointment to serve the students of Berkeley because they hold up all students and their families. I have faith in the board and believe each of them will bring something to the discussion and to the work at hand. Throwing negativity at a board member, superintendent, and/or staff is neither productive nor helpful to understanding and finding solutions to the issues and concerns that the public has. It instead creates division on the dais and in the public. This negative action is unproductive, poisonous, and unhealthy for anyone. I urge the public to bring your concerns and solutions to the board and not divisive language and actions that are not productive in any arena. Thank you. Do I still have more time? I don't know where my time is. Oh, it's time. I can't see the number.
Sorry, you have about ten seconds.
Oh, no, I just wanted to reiterate how important it is with the bigger framework of dismantling white supremacy and institutional oppression that we come together as allies to work together on all the issues that our children and youth are facing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Diego Castillo, and thank you, former Director Leva Cutler, for those words. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Mr. La Chuga.
What's up, what's up, Hente? What's up, folks?
How are you? You've got three minutes.
What'd you say, fifteen minutes? All right, cool. What's up? My name is Aaron La Chuga. I'm a restorative justice counselor at Longfellow Middle School. So I just wanna say what's up and appreciations to y'all. I'm actually here to comment on an agenda item about the school architecture improvement plan for Longfellow. I just wanna say that I had the pleasure, the opportunity, the privilege to be on the steering committee, also to participate in the staff-focused group as well as the Clue de Padres-focused group. And so I just wanna, you know, throw my appreciation behind that process, behind for the folks who participated, you know, the community members, the students who really represented. And, you know, Longfellow is a place I love dearly. Both my kids went through Longfellow, and, you know, it's a gem in the community. And so I just wanna, I think it's long overdue. And anyways, I'm just here to share my appreciations. Apologize I'm not on camera. I didn't get my hair done today. So y'all can just look at my picture.
Oh, come on. Let us see you.
I'm telling you, man, you know, I'm on, there it is. But this picture is better. I want the picture better. It says much more than I, than my grill. But anyways, so much love and appreciation to everybody who participated in the process and for the support, and it's like I said, it's well overdue. And appreciate y'all. Much love and respect and peace.
Well, thank you. Thank you for those comments and for giving us the opportunity to thank you for all the work that you do at Longfellow. You're one of our RJ heroes. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I love y'all and you. That's what's up.
All right. Take care. Have a good night.
Take care.
All right. Mark Joseph Ramia and then Paz Melendez Canales will be our last public speaker.
Mark Ramy here, Classified Berkeley High School Instructional Assistant, Prayer Professional. I'd like to start off by saying that the BUSD school board member Laura Babbitt is encouraging forgiveness. So I will go along with that topic. If I were to forgive the school board you for lack of proper oversight in matters in this district such as the twenty-day rule still not having a process and the open lawsuit unresolved, the classification study not done, vacation and sick days not granted or paid as they should be, the classified staff having to double down on duties, some working out of class yet not being compensated, and a few more things. Would that open the deafened ears that may not care to know? If I could forgive all those things, would it make a difference? And would you just start another list of things not to do? The lesson you should have learned by now as the school board is that your lack of action impacts thousands of students and their families. You are the gatekeepers of student success, yet pride yourselves, even pat yourselves on the back, while the rate of failure is so high. The classifieds are the lowest-paid, underappreciated, and most harmed class, which cannot seem to get justice within the system, the very system that was created for basic protection. When you all took the position as school board members, you made an oath stating that your performance was about doing what is correct. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Paz Melendez Canales.
Good evening. Sorry. Good evening, Board Directors, Superintendent Stevens, Staff, and BUSD community. My name is Paz Melendez Canales, and I have kids attending Longfellow Middle School and Berkeley High. Today, I am here to ask that the board dedicate some specific funding for the Latinx resolution for interventions for students next year in a possible presentation that includes maybe a Latinx success framework. Thank you also for the support throughout this year for Latinx and all students and for being open to work with Latinos Unidos of Berkeley and other groups looking to improve outcomes for prioritized students. We really appreciate your partnership and collaboration with us. I also know Mr. Calleys will be bringing the Longfellow Modernization Project for board approval today. So please note, it is not a remodel. It's a whole modernization of the entire campus. So we at Longfellow are very excited about this long-awaited vision finally starting to materialize. I would like to thank the board, Superintendent Stevens, John Calleys, the architectural firm Gold Evans, the BUSD facilities team, and especially the Longfellow community, the parents, teachers, and staff, the Longfellow advocacy group, PTA, school site council, El Clube de Padres, and everyone who advocated for the funds and attended meetings with Gold Evans and took the time to give your input and share your vision of what the campus should look like and what our students, families, staff, and staff need and deserve. We really appreciate all the work everyone put into this project to make it a reality. So a big thank you to everyone involved. I would like, I won't be there any longer, but I can't wait to see what the campus will look like in a few years. So, sí se pudo. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melendez Canales. Appreciate it. Okay. That concludes our public comment period, and thank you for everybody who came to speak. Now we will hear from our unions. If we have any union representatives, if there's a union representative, if you can raise your hand. Ms. Torres, I'm assuming we don't have any pre-recorded.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Moving right along to committee comments. I know we have a comment from the Parent Advisory Committee. That's Sandra Loving. So why don't we go right to Ms. Loving on behalf of the Parent Advisory Committee? And if there's any other committee comments, if you could raise your hands too, that would be great. Hi, Ms. Loving. Go ahead. You've got five minutes.
Okay. How you guys doing?
Good.
All right. Good evening. What a year we have all had. I'm here tonight to reflect what many PAC members experienced this year. On one hand, we experienced a quality of collaboration that was fresh and energizing, resulting in the most exciting year the PAC has had. We were on a quest to find out what works and what doesn't for our prioritized students and learned so much. We built relationships with district staff, educators, and families. We actively, by actively listening to what they were saying, we created our recommendations that have widespread support. This year was also very challenging for PAC, and you can read it in detail in the PAC comments that will be emailed to you this evening. I will share a glimpse of what we went through. The district's top-down PAC meetings took us nowhere. As of our March meeting, we had no information to work with, so we mobilized. PAC representatives spoke with people in the district office, OFI specialists, our school principals, teachers, the high school intervention counselors, the bridge teacher families, and to prepare for our comments on emotional support needs, I personally reached out to find counselors and other supports in the elementary, middle, and high school settings. The PAC didn't have any input into the district decision to reward the LCAP goals, relocate actions within them, and change the funding source for ten LCAP-originated programs. There was no transparency in the decision-making process. And sadly, the new budget does not do enough for our prioritized students. So in this mixing up of everything, is there a positive for the PAC? Surprisingly, yes. The positive is that the PAC learned more about using the LCAP to implement a strategic plan. Surprisingly, we're now optimistic and hopeful. We believe building strategy into the LCAP and using it as a tool as it is intended to be is how, finally, BUSD can do better for our prioritized kids. It requires a cleaned-up and more inclusive LCAP, and the PAC's accountability oversight now extends to programs other than just those that are supplementally funded. It will be fueled by more collaboration between the PAC and those implementing actions and with other district committees as well. And personally, a fire has been lit under me because our children are worth it. In our community, there's so much care and knowledge amongst our families and educators that I know the most vulnerable students here can thrive. Let's focus on providing them without, providing them what they need without compromise. I know we all want that, and I know we can do it. So enjoy the summer. Take care and rest well because we have a lot of work ahead of us in the 2021-2022 school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Loving. Thanks for all your work and for your leadership. Have a good night.
You too.
Oops, I don't know. I muted myself. Okay. Thank you, and I don't see any other comments. So it will go to union, I mean, board member and superintendent comments. Who would? Kadija Babbitt.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to say that I'm so pleased to be wrapping up this last board meeting of this school year. And I'd like to thank the district for responding to the parent advisory comments this year. This is the first time in at least two cycles of comments in which written response was provided. As our parent volunteer leaders spent a lot of time, thought, and emotional energy into providing advisory comments, I'm so grateful for the ways in which we as a district respond with action and implementation, and so looking forward to doing more next year. I want to thank all of our administrators, who will continue to work diligently over the summer to prepare for the fall and the great challenges ahead with the full reopening of schools and all the related post-pandemic impacts. I was asked by some why more hadn't been done already to prepare for fall's needs, and I immediately recalled how much work was put into meeting the monumental minimum needs this year presented week after week. So thank you again to all the students, families, faculty, contractors, city personnel, clergy, community leaders, oversight, and advisory committees that helped BUSD make it through this year. I hope everyone will return this far refreshed and ready to commit again as the best even from this board is yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Babbitt. That was great. Appreciate it. Who's next?
I can go.
Okay.
I can follow that. The best is yet to come. Thank you, Director Babbitt.
That's what she was talking about, this board comment right now.
No, hardly. You know, as we wrap up the school year, I hope that this will be the last time in board comments that I have to say the phrase, "It's been an unprecedented year." I hate the comment, and it can't be denied that it really has been something that none of us have ever experienced before. And while the pandemic is not over, we hopefully have turned the curve and through all of the vaccinations, that we really are on a forward momentum. I look forward to returning to in-person board meetings in August, I hope, and while we're moving into in-person school. And that we'll continue to make the accommodations as needed for vulnerable families and teachers or staff that we need to. I really want to express my sincere appreciation to all of the parents and families, the guardians that went through this school year. Whether they showed up at a board meeting or not, we know the struggle that people went through and the patience and the commitment and the support to the district and the teachers and the staff. I also want to thank all the students who struggled through this year. You know, we heard voices from our high school students and from many of our students throughout the year. And I thank folks and students for stepping up and staying focused and just persevering in a really challenging time. I want to thank all the teachers and the staff for their tenacity and their persistence in making Zoom school work and then transitioning to in-person. And I want to thank all the administrators at both the school sites and the central office for the diligent work, the hours, the hours that you guys all put in in order to make education for our students a success. I'm hoping that we venture into the next school year that we're able to move into in-person meetings but keep Zoom as an option because I think it has really opened the door for a level of engagement that has never happened before. When we're totally dependent on people showing up to the school district boardroom to give public comment, we are not getting the richness of the parent and guardian community or even the student community. So I hope Superintendent Stevens, we can figure out ways to intersperse a hybrid model for community engagement. And, you know, lastly, I think it's, you know, it's our parent advisory councils tremendously contribute a tremendous amount of richness to our deliberations. I want to thank all the parents of guardians of seniors who don't have kids in the district anymore, who are moving on, and thank you for helping make this district what it is. And I want to thank all of you who are continuing to stay, to continue to be engaged in our committees and to provide the leadership that you have been over the past years. And it's just been an honor to serve, and I look forward to the next school year.
Thanks, Director Sinai.
And the best is yet to come.
I think we should all just end with that.
That's your cue, Director Vasudev. The best is yet to come.
All right. Well, I also wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight and for your public comments. I really appreciate all of you who are here joining us for our last school board meeting. I also wanted to echo our superintendent's warm words of welcome towards Ms. Kathy Fleming, our new Director of Local Resources. Ms. Fleming, I'm thrilled to hear about your experience, especially with community engagement in SFUSD. I know that's a very tough job, and I'm really excited to see what you will contribute to this position. We're just really excited to welcome you. I also want to take the time to thank Ms. Natasha Berry, our current Director of Berkeley, of the Berkeley Schools Excellence Program and Community Relations. Natasha, I can't imagine BUSD without you. I have enjoyed working with you on the piano and also on our multilingual community engagement during COVID-19 response. I'll never forget the hundreds of slides that you reviewed for those UCSF presentations to our community. I think Natasha really embodies the best of our district, and it's been such a pleasure working with you this year and for many years in BUSD. And, you know, you'll be really missed, Natasha. I also want to thank our students and families and staff for your patience this year. I won't say it was an unprecedented year. What a year. And, you know, we're really looking forward just to, you know, coming to a more stable school year next year, right? Into helping our families continue to thrive and to helping our students recover from this pandemic because we know it doesn't happen overnight. We know it's a process, right? And I think it's really important that, you know, as we use the summer to really think about, you know, how we're gonna come in strong next year. And so I'm really looking forward to continuing to hear from our families. I want to know what we can do better to help our students thrive, you know, from our educators, and really just wish everyone a wonderful and restful summer and know that, you know, it's been a pleasure to serve. It's definitely been one of the hardest years for any school board. I've talked to many school board members who feel the same way, and it's been one of the most challenging years to serve. But it's also been a pleasure to see how our community has stepped up this year, right? All the love that I feel in our community and really the collaborative spirit from our educators, from our parents, from just the richness of the community engagement that we do in BUSD, which, you know, I don't see in many districts. I think we're really fortunate to have the district that we do because we have a lot of passionate families and we have a lot of passionate educators. And we don't always agree, but it's been really beautiful and healing to see how we've come together to move our district forward. And I'm looking forward to, you know, continuing to engage and continuing to see us come together, whether it's in committees to talk about the budget or, you know, whether it's the middle school assignment process, you know, whatever the issue is, you know, whether it's virtual or in-person, right? I like the hybrid approach that my fellow colleague Director Sinai proposed. You know, however, we're engaging next year. I know that our communities will continue to step up and come out stronger, and the best is yet to come. Did I end on the right one, President Alper?
We're gonna figure out a way to, or we're gonna try to figure out a way and work with the city to have in-person board meetings with an opportunity to call. And I would just urge us to please not call it hybrid if we can never call anything hybrid again. I think we all might be better off. But in concept, in concept, I agree. All right, Vice President Brown.
Thanks, President Alper. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to those of you who are still coming to our board meetings, all the way into the last, very last one. But thank you all so much for being there. And for those who will watch this later, thank you for your continued commitment throughout the entire... For those who will watch this later, thank you for your continued commitment throughout the entire school year. I would also like to welcome Kathy to our incredible and dynamic team here. In Berkeley Unified School District and I can't wait to, to meet you in person. And while welcoming Kathy, I would, I would just like to say to Natasha. That you are a phenomenal, incredible, wonderful, wonderful gym. And you have been here in BUSD for a while, but on a personal note. You made yourself completely available to me when I first joined the school board and let me know everything I needed to know. About our parcel taxes and about the inner workings of the district, anything I needed to know, even outside. Of your expertise, you made yourself available to me. And so I will always remember that and appreciate that. And for just the incredible way that you served our district. Our families, our students and our staff is better because of you. So thank you for your impact and you will truly, truly, truly be missed. I said it during the board meeting before the last day of school after graduation. But thank you once again to our stakeholders, to our families and faculty and student, staff and students alike. Thank you for sticking it out during this incredibly challenging year and to my board colleagues. Oftentimes, you all are not recognized for the behind the scenes work that you do. And so I would just like to take this point of privilege to say thank you to you all for making yourselves available for. Sometimes putting school board work before your actual nine to five jobs, your families and sometimes even your health. So thank you, thank you, thank you for this incredible year. And I, although we have more work to do, I'm proud. Of where we've, where we've come and how we've been able to maneuver through this incredibly difficult year. In partnership with the superintendent and, and staff. So thank you all so much. It's a joy and a privilege and also a pleasure to work with each and every one of you. And then finally to. Sorry, I lost my last comment. So I guess I'll end it here and just say thank you again to everyone who is here and the best is yet to come.
It's gonna be the best board comment ever. Actually, I, I, I just want to second what all of you said. All the thanks, including to our superintendent for. For his leadership during this incredibly difficult year, but also I'm glad Vice President Brown mentioned you all are board colleagues. It's really been a pleasure to, to work with you all to. To, to sort of navigate some stormy waters together and it's a great team. And I really am looking forward to next year when I think we'll be able to. Do so many of the things that we've been wanting to do. And had to put on hold this year. There's so much pent up desire. There's so much pent up need. We have some available resources, so it's an exciting fall to be entering into. And I'll turn it over now to our superintendent who will be leading us through that fall process. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you very much, President Alper. I think like everybody who spoke before, I'm also sort of feeling caught up in this moment of reflection and gratitude. As this year comes to an end, I know that for a lot of us, we've sort of had to continue to work at a very stiff pace. Over the last couple of months, even as much of our community is beginning to return to normal, we've been maintaining a hectic pace. With weekly board meetings and still many administrative tasks to resolve. Over the last several meetings, I've sort of taken time to sort of thank various segments of our community. And it really is quite remarkable, the level of sacrifice and sort of, sort of collective effort that we have made as a community. Starting with our students who have, I think, engaged in this sort of really unrecognized act of heroism to protect members of our community. That was really, probably should not have been asked of them and yet they bore that weight for all of us collectively over the course of these long 15 months. And who knows how many more people are safe because of that sacrifice. Our families, I know that this has been a deeply painful time. Every paternal maternal instinct that we all possess to keep our children safe, to see them with friends, to see them in a, in a. In a situation of acceptance was for many families just shattered this year, my family included. And that has been, I think, for every one of our parents, just a very painful moment to go through. We've, I've had a chance as well to thank our teachers who have developed new skills, trying to teach kids, trying to love kids in every way they can from, from their own houses. While often caring for their own families. And for principals who had to reconceive of their schools as this new remote environment, what a remarkable act they've made. I haven't really sort of focused yet on thanking the folks who appear in this little Brady Bunch grid. Staring in front of me right now, and I'd like to do that as the closing comments of this year. So first, just to my cabinet colleagues, I'm going to address you individually. John, thank you. John, over and over again, sort of stepped into realms that just were not his, by, by any stretch of the imagination, from student testing to facilities prep. Sunday calls with companies we'd never heard of, trying to figure out how to get kids tested. All of these things I saw over and over again, you just stepped into with such an openness and please know that I saw it and really, really appreciate it. Sam, to you as well, this has been the season of unending bargaining. It seems like we get one MOU signed and then there's another one to think about and all with issues we'd never before contemplated in our professional lives. So you pulled that off and did so with a lot of grace, a lot of patience and all while managing. A department and a personal life as well. So thank you very much. And then Pauline as well, you've also been asked to take on all kinds of things that you'd never contemplated as well. I know you now know more about PPE than anybody else in the district and how much exactly we have of it and where it is. And then, of course, you've managed a really complex budget process in the middle of this. So I just want to call you out as well personally for all of that work. Three of our board members didn't know what they were signing up for when they ran for office. And then two of you somehow did know that you were signing up to become a pandemic board member. Whatever the case may be, though, I do want to acknowledge you on behalf of all of the staff. It is true that this has been somewhat of a thankless endeavor for all of us and that we have had to wrestle with really sort of trying terrible dilemmas. For a very long time, we all carried the stress of this sort of dilemma, this awful choice we were forced to make about risks to safety and the need for education. And I know that carried a weight for every one of you like it did for me. So I want to thank you very sincerely, every one of you, for your leadership, for your patience, for hanging in there with us. As we as a team have sort of struggled through all this new content and sometimes come apart a little bit over the course of this year. We really do appreciate your support and your leadership. And then finally, my last thank you, as any good son should do. You may notice that there's another Stevens in this audience and I just want to give a quick little shout out to my mom. She's been a consistent viewer of all of these board members and meetings. She knows every one of us by name, trust me. So I want to thank you as well for, for just hanging in there over the course of the year. And many long phone calls as I come close to tears, sort of talking about how complicated everything was. So thanks, Mom. So back over to you, President Alper, and thanks for, for giving me that opportunity.
Your mom is on here twice, Dr. Stevens. She just can't get enough.
Yes, that, that, that is the privilege of having the superintendent as your son. You, you get two passes to the show.
Lucky her. All right, well, welcome, Ms. Stevens.
Since we're shouting out parents, I just want to recognize that my dad is here too. So thank you, Daddy.
There he is, Mr. Brown. Maybe we should promote, maybe we should promote Rodney Brown and Nancy Stevens to panelist. Ms. Chires, can you, can you just briefly promote Rodney Brown and?
A note. They have to agree to get off cam, camera, though.
Yeah, well, if, if they, if they really don't want to, they don't have to turn, turn on their cameras.
I'm promoting Rodney Brown now.
Khedja, you and I are, we're, we're going to endure this together.
Yeah, they said we should turn our cameras off, Julie. Is that what you said?
No, I meant on. Get back on here.
Now Rodney, I think brought Khedja's baby book with him tonight, so.
To share his screen?
No, we're going too far now.
All right, Ms. Stevens or Mr. Brown, if either one of you wants to turn your cameras, you're welcome to. You don't have to, but. You're welcome to.
But we're waiting.
You don't have to.
You can, or you can say hi. There you are. Rodney, you want to say hello?
Good evening, Board. President Ty Alfred and everybody. Good to see you all. In, in the circumstance concerning and considering, but uh, it's just great to listen in on what you all are doing. I'm very proud of all of you. And continue the great work that you all are doing despite the circumstances that we're dealing with, with the pandemic and all. I see you guys are diligently doing your due diligence of service and I'm definitely, definitely proud of my baby, Ms. Khedja Brown. Thank you for the wonderful Father's Day meal that you serve for us. Beautiful thing. So again, thank you all for inviting me and having me.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Brown. Ms. Stevens, you have 15 minutes. She was unmuted a minute ago.
Mom, Dad, are you there?
There they are.
I'm here, but I don't know if you can hear me.
There, we can hear you.
Well, I just want to say that I, I worked in education for 28 years. So I can identify with all of you and the roles and the, the issues you've been dealing with this year. It is unprecedented. And I think all of you handled yourselves so well. What I'm so impressed with the board is the civility and the. Reflection that you present to the public about the big issues that come up. I think you're all to be congratulated. You're a wonderful board. And of course, you know, I'm very proud of Brett and he always worked his head off. But anyway, I think you're all doing a great job. Congratulations to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wow, I think we should end it there.
That was very sweet, Ty. Thank you for doing that.
That was really nice.
All right, thank you all. Now, even more exciting is the consent counter. Someone like to make a motion to approve the consent counter?
Some moved.
Wish Red, versus Brown, is there a second?
A second.
Director of Sinai, I think. Ms. Chires, thank you for promoting our parents.
Director Vassadab?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. All right, thank you all. Now we have. Discussion item 12.1. Uh, Dr. Stevens, I'll, I'll let you introduce, introduce this.
Oh yeah, thanks very much, President Alper. I'm just going to turn the presentation over to Stephen Jimenez Robb, who's going to come back on camera. Mr. Jimenez Robb is the coordinator of our newly renamed District Office of Civil Rights and Compliance. What we all referred to previously as the Title IX Office. Mr. Jimenez Robb is relatively new to Berkeley Unified, where I think we welcomed you onboard in January. Another sort of pandemic entry into the district. But in that very short time, he's been hard at work with a new Title IX investigator, Mary Keating. Both to organize the office and begin a very proactive approach to training our administrators. Opportunities to students and to staff and then engage with me in conversations about how to lead the district. To the next level of sort of proactive response on the topic of sexual harassment prevention. So Mr. Jimenez Robb has prepared a presentation, a relatively brief presentation, and will walk you through the activities that he and his office. Have been engaged in over the last academic year. So over to you, Stephen, and thank you again for being here.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board President Alper, Board Members, Dr. Stevens and other Cabinet Members. My name is Stephen Jimenez Robb and I am the Title IX Coordinator for the District. Someone was going to give me sharing rights. I think it was Lasagna.
Yeah, I believe I, you're able to share your screen.
Let's see.
So you have access to share your screen at the bottom of your screen. There's a green.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
Stephen, is it helpful if I share my screen and I'll just advance the slides?
Yeah, can you do that?
Happy to do it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Okay, let's just go to the next slide. So tonight I'm going to be providing you a brief update on what the District Office of Civil Rights and Compliance Office has been doing in terms of. Title IX and sexual harassment, training and other things that we've been doing in the office. Dr. Stevens mentioned the members of my office. I'd like to mention them again here. Mary Keating is an attorney and she's my Title IX investigator and Tanya Wilson is our administrative assistant. Okay, next slide. So listed here are the individuals, the law firms, the school districts and. The parent and student organizations that we have worked with in this past year, who have been providing us resources and training and guidance. Megan Farrell, Lizzana Smith, Fagan Friedman and Full Frost, San Francisco Unified School District, the Los Angeles Unified School District. The Parent and Student Shack and we are members of the Association of Title IX Administrators. Okay, next slide. So this is the training that we have been doing this past year. Myself and members of my team have had Title IX training with two different law firms. We provided Title IX and sexual harassment training for K-12 administrators. The Berkeley High School Faculty, Berkeley High School Counselors and the Berkeley. I forget what ETA stands for, Berkeley Tech Academy Faculty as well. Next slide. The student trainings that have taken place this past year have been with Green Dot. This is Upstander Training. Ms. Juste Molly, who was a counselor and Ms. Claudia Gonzalez, who is the school's dean. Do all the student trainings with students. They help facilitate this process and this is all peer-led. Another sexual harassment training that is peer-to-beard, that has been peer-led and. And has been facilitated by the Student Shack, has been taking place this past year at the high school, going to classroom to classroom. To provide this training. Okay. As well as my office has updated and sent out the sexual harassment prevention notifications. The non-discrimination notices and the Williams legislation to all the schools and all of our district offices. So all that information is now has been distributed and it is updated. Next slide. So the newly renamed Office District Civil Rights and Compliance Office has a new website. If you were to go to the website, you would see all of these various tabs from Title IX sexual harassment, sexual harassment, non-discrimination. Bullying, LGBTQ, married, expected and parent students, Title VI. And then our complaint procedure form, starting with the uniform complaint procedures, the district level complaints and our Williams complaints. All of this information is updated and there's all additional resources per tab. Okay. So as we move forward to the new school year. We will continue to provide sexual harassment training for certificated and classified employees, students and parents and community stakeholders. We are also providing training, new training for, on transgender and gender equity for certificated and classified. We started doing that particular training this year with our K-8 administrators. We have recently purchased curriculum called Changing Boys into Men. It's an anti-sexual violence curriculum specifically targeting male athletes. And Berkeley High School now has a new consent educator who will be providing expanded. Training and resources for our high school students. And that's it. So if there's any questions that you guys have to open up any discussion here, I'm more than happy to answer. Any and all your questions.
Thank you so much. Thanks for that presentation for, for, for all that work and I'll turn over to. Thanks for that presentation for 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 all that work. I and I'll turn over to Director Babett in a second. I just want to even some of the things that seem straightforward, like I'm posting the the discrimination um information, sort of where to file complaint and updating the website, things that um you know, that seem relatively simple are are things that we haven't always done well in the past and have been criticized for, you know, reasonably and appropriately for not doing and not updating. And so I was just looking through the the website over the last couple of days and just even just now during your presentation and it's really impressive, the just the amount of well-organized information that's that is now available to community members, which is really important. I mean, in addition to the programmatic work that that you talked about. So so anyway, I'm I'm impressed and and thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
Director Babett and then Director Sinai.
Yes, thank you so much for for that update um and for your work. I'm curious as to your goals for next year and how you plan to measure the success of the um climate improvements around all of these issues at our various campuses. Also, um want to know how we plan to expand our curriculum down to the middle school level or K through twelve level, should we say, and then um really want to target our measurements for success. And what are your?
Okay, so so to answer your question, um we would like to put out a survey at the very beginning of the school year to um measure the school climate in our high schools and in our uh K-8 schools. Uh and then do provide the services and training that we want to do for for our students and the trainings for our faculty and staff members and for members of the community. And then uh within a few more months, provide another post-survey to measure the the quality of the work that we've been doing. And if we're if there's anything that we're missing in the in terms of our delivery and what we could do to improve in our systems. I'm also working with Gabe Fredman, who um is a teacher on special assignment. He's currently working in Student Services. Dr. Shelly and I will be sharing him to also do climate work uh in various spaces regarding AAPI, BLM, and we're also working with another individual to provide uh training and services regarding uh transgender training and uh resources and accommodations as well. So within the three of us working on this, we will be able to provide services K through twelve. Additionally, we will be working with the high school, the Student Shack, Green Dot, and um our our newly hired consent educator. And also measuring the success of what they're currently doing pre and post through surveys.
Great, thank you so much. And do you have a plan um for middle school and then also for um board reporting so that we can get some kind of average number of complaints, the time it takes to resolve them, measurements for success as to those numbers going down or up? And then that's then I'll relinquish. Thank you.
Okay, so you so I'm 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 processing what you just said to me or asked of me. Um so currently in terms of um any type of uh sexual harassment training that we're doing at the hot at the middle school, we do have a curriculum in place that addresses it. And it's through our it's through our uh teacher on special assignments, Gabe Fredman, who facilitates that. At the elementary school, there is some information that students receive uh in the curriculum around bullying. My goal as uh Title IX is to provide greater training at the middle school sites for our faculty, our staff, our parents, stakeholders within that group, as well as at the elementary level as well. We can provide information for students through assemblies at the middle schools and at the elementary level. I think in the past year, because of what's been happening at the high school and the number of sexual assaults that have been occurring off-campus, we've been really targeting our resources more towards the high school as a result of that. And then you asked me one more question and I forgot what it was.
It's about, I think it was about sort of the number of complaints and is that something that can be reported to the board as a way of sort of assessing your progress?
Absolutely, absolutely. So we already have uh a lot of that information that we can provide for the board now. You know, if you wanted it by tomorrow, I can provide it for you so that you could at least see for the last three years the trends in the type of complaints that the office has been receiving in terms of uh uniform complaints regarding any type of sexual harassment or any type of sexual assault or any other type of complaints that have occurred uh even outside of the UCP. We already have all that information logged.
I'm just going to jump in real quick and ask that as we it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but that that, you know, and I think we you used to have quarterly reporting of of those numbers. If we could include uh the demographics of the com- complainants and the um and the alleged victims in those cases too, because one measure of success, I would imagine, would be the reduction in those complaints. But um there's also been a con- a real concern in the past about um racial disparities and who is who's accused particularly of sexual assault in this district. And so it would be that would be another another measure of success, I think, would be a reduction in the racial disproportionality, um just like it it's sort of the flip side to the discipline numbers that we that we want to reduce the disproportionality of. So
Yeah, and we can provide you with that information as well.
Okay. Director Babett, is that does that satisfy your questions? Okay. Um Director Sinai?
Hey, thank you for the update. Um I really appreciate it. And you're clearly doing, again, I think, another example within our unique circumstance. You've still been able to get a lot of work done around this issue. So I really appreciate it. I have two three questions. One is, is there a district-wide sexual harassment advisory committee, or is it strictly a Berkeley High? That's one question. The second question is when you look at metrics for success, uh it would be, I think, extremely important to do turnaround time of the investigation and resolution of a complaint. So not just how many complaints we get, but how are how quickly, how effectively are they resolved um and closed? And then my my other question is, there's looks like a lot of training. How much of the training for faculty and staff is voluntary versus mandatory? And how how is the approach to get as many adults um on campus trained as possible? And knowing that it's not a one-shot deal, you know, kind of what's the ongoing uh development? So those are those are my three questions and I'm done.
Okay, so I'm going to start with your last question, because that's the one that I remember the most. Right now, a lot of the training is voluntary. So when I was newly hired here, uh because training is voluntary, I made it a point to have one-to-one discussions with all the administrators, K-8 and high school. Uh a lot of my discussions was around the complaint process and training, okay, and the importance of training. Uh which is why it was important for me this year to train all the administrators, because that's typically where it begins first. Administrators have uh administrators that are trained, seen the value of the training, and then saying, okay, I want you to come out to my school to conduct a training. So again, the training is voluntary. In previous school districts that I've worked for, the board and the superintendent, if if they felt, made the training mandatory, okay? So that would be that would be something that would fall into your purview if if you want a training to be mandatory for all faculty and staff. Uh the second question you asked, again, I forgot.
The metrics around turnaround time and resolution to the complaint?
So let me uh tell you, in my uh training that I've done as Title IX for about eleven years, uh those are statutory guidelines. When you're talking about when you receive a complaint and then the entire process of um acknowledging the complaint, the investigation, and then when that individual receives their decision letter. I have always stayed within statutory guidelines. So typically, a complaint is about sixty days, but we can do it within forty-five to fifty days to stay well within a well within uh timeline. Under my direction, that's never going to be a problem to to respond to complaints in a very uh immediate and reasonable manner. And then your other first question was?
I really appreciate that. Um and what I would ask is, and I trust that your professional commitment to that, but when um when we have, whether it's quarterly reports, it would be good for us to know that you're that you're able to do that, because that has been, as I think Director Babett said, or vice or President Alper, I'm not sure, that the issue of the timeliness of the complaints in the past has been a challenge for a whole variety of reasons. So if we could just, you know, know that it's on track, you know, that's something that you could just, it could be a very quick. Everything has met the guideline of forty-five to sixty days. That that's all it would be.
And then just sorry. Just one thing I'd like to add is when I do this work, I'm always aware of we can easily be audited. And when I worked for the Los Angeles Unified School District, during the time that I was the Title IX Coordinator, we were audited three times within a five-year period. So I understand the importance of sitting with auditors and having to show them all of our spreadsheets indicating when we receive complaints and when the complaint was completed. And all of our complaints were always one hundred percent within a timeline, because you would have to explain to an auditor why you why you cannot complete your complaints on time. So and it's really
Lucky to have you.
Well, it's really important not to have that extra level of oversight. You really want to be able to take care of business. So I'm sorry, your next question was?
It was just, I know we have a sexual harassment advisory council or committee at the at the high school level. I think we used to have a district one. I'm just wondering if we still do.
We do. And and I I have to say that a lot of the concerns that come from that advisory committee, a lot of their concerns are primarily at the high school, not so much what's happening at the middle school or at the elementary schools. So that has been our primary focus with that advisory committee.
So maybe as you guys are developing your plan for next year, Dr. Stevens, I I think it's important for us to have some discussion about if there's a work planned for training and we're not getting the uptick on a voluntary basis that we that we need or we go, you know, we have a goal for, that would be another goal that we would want to set that, again, following Director Babett's idea of like, what are the metrics for? How much training is happening based on a voluntary and whether or not it needs to transition to a mandatory? Because we need to have people trained. Hopefully, they do it voluntarily. But if not, then we need to have some board discussion about whether or not we need to mandate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bess, and Brown, and then Director Vasudev.
Thank you. Uh my question is pretty similar to uh the one that Director Sinai brought up, um but not necessarily in terms of process. For um those who alleged victims who um who write a formal complaint, my question is more so um about support and um how that process. Um I know, you you know, you mentioned the turnaround time and the importance of getting that done quickly, um but I also wanted to know just your thoughts um in terms of supporting along the way for um those alleged victims. I know that oftentimes um these processes uh focus on the alleged harasser right and and disciplining um the harasser. And oftentimes, this is the mark on providing um social emotional support um for the alleged victim. And so I just wanted to know um if that was on your radar and how you plan to um address and respond to that.
So absolutely, that's on our radar in terms of students who come forward to report any type of sexual harassment assault or battery. Part of our effort is to coordinate directly with the schools, their counselors. Uh I understand that also at um Berkeley High School, they um they have an outside service provider that provides counseling support for students and it's on campus. So it would definitely be coordinating our efforts to ensure that our students who are uh targets of any type of sexual harassment or misconduct are supported fully through counseling support or any other types of supports that we can provide for them. I can tell you that in my experience, that even that export that's type of support even extends to uh security and administrators uh to make sure that they are monitoring and supervising students on campus who have been targets of sexual harassment, to make sure that they're able to navigate their way through the school safely, so that they are not, let's say, um re-targeted or retaliated against for coming forward to file a complaint. So all of those things are on our are on our mind. It's almost like having a checklist in your head of any possible um negative impact that a a student could have coming forward when they come and file a a complaint. But definitely the emotional support is 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 necessary for anyone who um who's been a target.
Thank you. Thank you for uh for that and for that, for the information. My next question um is something else that falls under sexual harassment is sex-based discrimination, which is oftentimes the conversation, um something that is that is missed or not a part of the conversation. And so I wanted to know what your thinking was around that, your um how our our faculty and staff will be prepared or trained to um to respond to that, as well as how our students and the rest of our school communities will be uh prepared to pre- prepared to prevent um those types of occurrences and behaviors and attitudes from happening.
Okay, so when we talk about Title IX, that is really the cornerstone of Title IX gender equity, right? And so that is a big piece of the training. It's not just talking about students or individuals who are harassed, but it's also the non-discrimination piece where you are. So when we do this training, we have conversations with teachers about using gender-neutral language in the classroom. And then even in the curriculum, how you highlight the significance of women in history, how you how you address gender in the classroom, even the way students are seated in the classroom. You even discuss um gender equity and parity in, let's say, physical education and in sports. You address it with counselors, how counselors counsel students on higher education or um career paths. So if you were wherever you can see where there there could be uh discrimination based on gender, it's in every single facet of of school. From student discipline to counselors to what takes place in the classroom, what takes place in a PE class, and especially what takes place in sports as well, and making sure that even coaches understand that all students are all students based on their gender and other protected classes are created equal.
All right, thank you. Um and Director Vasudev, you've got the last question unless Director Babett, do you still have your hand up? You do. Okay, go ahead, Director Vasudev.
Yeah, I just wanted just to thank uh Mr. Stephen Jimenez Robb for your presentation. And having worked with you um closely in our affinity group meetings with our AAPI community, I know that equity is very much at the center of your work. So I just wanted to to thank you for your presentation tonight. I'm really, I'm really excited to see the expansion in consent education as a previously where I got on the board as a parent leader. I know that that work was very near and dear to the heart of our former um school board director, Judy Appel. So I'm really excited to see some of this work and some of these recommendations come to fruition that parents were discussing for the year the year before last. And so um that's really exciting to me. One of the things that I wanted to ask you, and I'm sure that you're already thinking about this, but I think it's good for the One of the things that I wanted to ask you, and I'm sure that you're already thinking about this, but I think it's good for the public to know because we, you know, we've discussed these issues in our affinity group meetings, but not not with the public. You know, having drafted the resolution denouncing hate crimes against our AAPI community, I know we were really intentional in putting a reporting process, a complaint process as part of that resolution, just calling it out. But the process by which we're explaining it to community and particularly in a multilingual way, right? Like, I would love to hear just more about how you're thinking of explaining, you know, our complaint procedures and how we're reporting that out to our Latinx community, to our Asian families, to our Arabic-speaking families in a multilingual way. Because I think, you know, to the disparities raised earlier by, I think it was President Alper, like, I want to make sure that, you know, all of our diverse families in the district know the great work that your office does, particularly because of the politics of this year. And we know that our AAPI community in particular has been very much hurt by hate against our community. And so I want to make sure that these complaint processes processes are rolled out in a very transparent way and that communities and particularly on the parent engagement side, right? That that's multilingual. Are there any resources dedicated to that kind of work? And if not, can we prioritize that, you know, for the fall? Because I think it's so important. We want to make sure that everybody can can access the resources of your office, right, to keep their children safe.
Absolutely. And so what you're what you're basically addressing is the fact that, you know, we live in a pluralistic society where we have parents and families who come to our schools who are multilingual. I know that coming from Los Angeles, we served a very broad spectrum of ethnicities and cultures where there was about 128 languages in in our own school district. So I know that there's a lot of language languages in in Berkeley as well. So part of that is for parents to to see themselves represented in the work that we do. And part of that representation is having our complaint forms translated into Spanish and other various languages. Having information on my website where there is information in in those various primary languages as well. And then when we conduct student trainings, I'm sorry, parent trainings and and trainings for members of the community, which I intend to do for this coming school year, that there is an individual who can also address or provide training and information to those parents also in their primary languages as well. So we're that's something that we are thinking about and we know that I know that Dr. Stevens has addressed it before with me that we're looking at other types of resources where we can utilize in this effort.
All right, we have a.
Great. And then I just had a quick follow-up question. In addition to your office, though, when those materials are developed, will you also work with our Office of Family Engagement to make sure that, you know, our Ophi specialists have have those resources too? Because oftentimes, they're the first line of communication with our multilingual families. And so I want to make sure that they know their resources. And when you do have those trainings, I would love to just kind of be a part of it because I I do want to celebrate your work. And I know that you've been very intentional about meeting with our affinity groups. So thank you.
Absolutely. And just to let you know, since the beginning, when I when I first arrived, I've already been having various meetings with Anne Marie Caligari about these very things, about how we can support our families. So that's great. So very much our our work is in alignment with each other as well as student services.
All right, Director Babbitt, I haven't given you the last word. We do have three more items to get to tonight. We're trying to end not too late, so.
Okay, great. So thank you so much for all of your responses and for for this detailed update. I have a final comment that I am pressed to make, which is a little uncomfortable for me because I've had children from elementary, middle through high school in BOSD schools. And I think one of the things that we don't really look at or name when it comes to sexual harassment is the impact of early exposure to pornography and the access that's so available to our students, even at third, fourth, fifth grade levels and how that all of those negative impacts kind of gets played out by the time late middle school and high school starts. And so I really was just pressed to just name that, that that really needs to be an intentional way that we are, we include those impacts to parents, to our technology departments to make sure that, you know, that access is really cut off and so that our students make the right choices early on and understand the long-term developmental impacts of 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 what they may think is funny or cute or, you know, however, some people assess it early on, which turns into more behaviors that we have to address later in life. So that was my last comment, and I just wanted to make it publicly. And hopefully, other parents out there will hear that and also do the research on that and really take it serious. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Director Babbitt. All right. Thank you, Mr. Jimenez Robb. That was a really rich discussion and presentation. So thank you. And thanks, Director Babbitt, for requesting that we put this on the agenda for tonight. So great. Have a good night, Mr. Jimenez Robb, and thanks for being with us tonight. I mean, you're welcome to stay.
I'm gonna go play with my dogs.
That sounds fun. All right, next, we have a few action items. So we're going to start with the approval of our local control and accountability plan. I don't think for this or the budget, there's an actual presentation, but Dr. Stevens has a few introductory comments, and then we do need to take action on both of these items. So we'll start with the LCAP.
Thank you very much, President Alper. You're correct. We did not prepare a presentation this evening, mainly because we've had a number of rich discussions in the meetings prior about both the LCAP and the various budgets that we've been looking at this year, including the general fund, the supplemental budget, and our COVID resources. What I thought I'd do prior to recommending for approval our current 21 through 24 LCAP is just offer to the community a few of the highlights included in this this local control accountability plan. This is a three-year plan. It's describing work that we hope to accomplish over the coming three-year period of time. This plan is not written in stone. We're both required in California to annually update this plan. And we have the option to go back in and look at it at any point that we feel like it's appropriate. So do you want to call out for the community that this is a starting point for three years of work, but doesn't represent the sum of our aspirations necessarily? And then it's also important to keep in mind that in the LCAP, not all of our action items are represented. Although there's dozens of action items here, the district has many other lines of work. For example, our sustainability plan, which is not represented in the LCAP, but it is nevertheless important. So among the highlights that I'd love to call out prior to making this recommendation is that this LCAP continues to sustain a number of our very important programs. Those include programs like Avid Bridge, our CTE pathways, LEAP classes, those are intervention classes at our high school, restorative justice counselors, we heard from one of them earlier today, our ELD and RTI supported schools, as well as Wilson and Slingerland Training for Reading Intervention Teachers. It's also important to note about this particular season that we have had to cut about $1 million from our supplemental grant program, also known as our LCAP budget. That $1 million is due to generally a reduction in the number of unduplicated students here in the district. And this particular LCAP, along with our budget, actually includes no cuts to supplemental grant programming. Through a variety of conversations, we've been able to move to different revenue sources, the full set of supplemental grant programming. And that is itself an accomplishment in these times. This particular LCAP separates out core instruction from intervention, I think will allow us over time to get more clear about the programs that are designed to improve core classroom instruction for all of our students. At this point, the LCAP includes action items like the Early Literacy Assessment Plan, the Literacy Action Plan, the Adoption of Dibbles as a new early literacy screener in grades K through two, a review of our math programming to take place in the 2122 school year, training for teachers on a practice called Integrated ELD, as well as additional resources for cultural competence training. The LCAP also calls out, and the budget includes resources to support a thoughtful and inclusive revision of the EL Master Plan, long inspiration of this community to go back into that 2014 plan and update it in keeping both with new guidelines and standards from the state, but also to reflect best practices. We are adding significantly to a number of intervention and support programs. The LCAP also calls out a rich array of new identity-based programs to begin taking place in this coming school year. Includes the June 2021 Latinx Resolution passed by the Board as well as a year ago, the June 2020 Black Lives Matter Resolution, included in the LCAP as well as resources related to the Draft African American Success Framework. And also called out is the Board's allocation of $600,000 in the coming school year towards the implementation of that draft framework. The LCAP also includes the Coordination of Early Intervention Plan or CCAS, which was actually the result of a rich set of community engagement efforts that took place during the pandemic and that included dozens of community members commenting on the ways in which we can prevent a disproportionate referral to special education services for African American students specifically. Included in this LCAP plan is a commitment to begin the development of a QWENTE program, expand our emoji offerings, as well as begin for the first time K-12 approach to ethnic studies. This LCAP maintains and increases resources related to the recruitment and retention of teachers, staff, and leaders of color, including a new Barra-funded staff position specifically for the purpose of recruitment and retention of staff of color, as well as ongoing partnership with the Principals Leadership Institute to partner with the Teachers of Color Network, financial support for the existing certificated Leaders of Color Network, and plans next year to build a brand-new Classified Leaders of Color Network, again, in collaboration with PLI. This LCAP calls out the Board's commitment to our Office of Family Engagement and Equity, which this year will include an additional 5.5 FTEs. And that is added to the 1.5 FTEs that was increased for Ophi in the 2021 school year. As well, this LCAP points the way to increase data collection and reporting. While it's not fully specified exactly what that will look like in the LCAP, it does make a firm commitment to begin to introduce to the district the principles of improvement science, as well as program evaluation, both in the formal sense, and then support from our expanded Brea office to our program managers to understand the principles of program evaluation. And then finally, I would call out that many of the dozens of action items inside of the LCAP are themselves plans. I've mentioned several of them, but they include a full CCAS plan, that coordination of early intervention services, the Black Lives Matter Resolution, the African American Success Framework, and the Literacy Action Plan. While each of those is only an individual item in the LCAP, they are themselves plans that have multiple action steps associated with them. This was not by any means a perfect planning process. We were all under a great deal of strain as we tried to open our schools, continue to deal with COVID health crises along the way, contending with ongoing quarantines. And I know from PAC comments that certainly our parent advisory committee members felt the strain that we were as well. Nevertheless, we were able to come together, I think, call out a number of important expansions of our equity work. And that's both reflected in our LCAP and in the next presentation reflected in our budget. So with that, President Alper, having sort of called out many of the highlights, I'm going to turn it back over to the board and recommend the approval of the 21 through 24 Local Control Accountability Plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Thanks for that summary of 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 the plan and I'll open it up for board and for all the work that went into it. And I'll open up for comments and questions, Director Babbitt.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Stevens, for all of that hard work. Thank you. Even in your absence, Michelle Sinclair and to our consultant who did so much. It really is amazing to have even what we have, considering all of the the priorities that we had to balance this year. So it is appreciated. My question is around the update. What is the plan so that we can not just measure success, but really put in the implementation and the accountability piece that we've talked about? And how do you how do you see that work rolling out so that as we make improvements, that's the area we can focus on? Or one of the areas?
Yeah, I really appreciate this question. It's something that I've been giving some thought to. The the first part of it, I imagine, with respect to the board is sitting down in the very early part of the coming school year to work with board leadership to develop essentially a syllabus of board presentations over the course of the year so that staff sort of have a predictable way that they know they'll be presenting updates to the board. And that way, the board also understands the cadence of our work before you to present our progress. So that, I think, will sort of lend a predictable nature. It also lets us collaborate together on that sort of sequence of board presentations. That's not the only thing I imagine happening, though. I'd also like to see that early in the year, program managers, through support with the Brea office, are articulating a refined set of program measurements. So that include could include, there were great examples that came up in the earlier discussion about sexual harassment prevention, number of teachers participating in trainings, surveys, student surveys, focus groups. And then ultimately, what we want to work towards is the district is being able to connect student outcomes with our actions. And and I think we're going to get there. I don't think it'll be right out of the gate, but that's exactly where we're going. So it's some form of predictable reports to the board, plus a regular set of reports that I'd like to see made public coming from a variety of our program managers that I think represents a good solid first step towards this vision of improvement science in the district.
Thanks, Director Vasidov.
Um, yes, thanks, Dr. Stevens, for for this summary. And I also want to echo the appreciation shared by my colleague, Director Babbitt, for you and the staff pulling this off in his unprecedented year. So I'm going to say that. Really quickly, you know, you mentioned that this is a three-year roadmap, right? And it's a roadmap and it's a framework. And as we think of, you know, looking at the LCAP, and I know we just passed the Latinx Resolution, but I also know that Latino advocates have been coming to many board meetings to say, we'd like something like a framework, we'd like something like Target, you know, we want to see more targeted interventions. And I think the resolution spells out the growth areas for our Latinx learners, right? Both on for English language learners and non-English language learners, but particularly, you know, in in math intervention, the need for math intervention, the need for college and career readiness. I mean, it's spelled out pretty detailed in the resolution. And so I feel like that, you know, now it's, the proof is in the pudding. How do we fund targeted interventions to really help our more our most vulnerable students? And so I would love to see an update of, you know, of the LCAP, you know, after the staff has a has a chance to to think about some of the things that you mentioned more thoughtfully in the fall. But particularly, what are the targeted interventions that we're going to implement as part of this roadmap for our Latinx learners and how we will fund them? Think, you know, a framework and a resolution is great as a black and white document that lives on paper. But if we don't bring it to life, then we're not succeeding as a district. And so I really want us to be thoughtful and, you know, to come back with some ideas for targeted programming for Latinx learners. Thank you.
Yeah, I really, I really do hear in board comments both this week and in previous weeks, the desire to sort of see regular updates from us and to know that the sort of words we've committed to paper are coming true. So just last week, we were proposing, for example, that we would come back to the board after this brief six-week hiatus once we're back on August 11th and report on staff's work towards identifying the partners, not only in terms of the African American Success Framework, but also in terms of the Latinx Resolution as well. And we staff see that these efforts are complementary and parallel to one another. And so what we learn in one area, we apply to the next and so on and so forth. It really needs to be sort of a hand-in-glove approach.
And we work together, right? Like, we work smarter. So we have programming that serves both, you know, our vulnerable student populations. And so I think that that's the beauty of it, right? And so it was great to work with Vice President Brown on that resolution. It's the the beauty of coalition building and the beauty of addressing our needs together. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Senna.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens, for all the work. And I echo the appreciation in absence of Michelle Sinclair and all the work that she did. And particularly want to also applaud the DLAC and the PAC for their persistence, their hours, their time. That's they're supposed to be with their families, you know, writing their documents and getting information to us so that we can make really informed decisions. I want to echo a little bit about what Paz Melendez Canales said and what Director Vasudev was saying is around the idea of a Latinx framework, similar to the work that we did on the African American Success Framework. And, you know, if there are ways that we can, you know, I I still I think the fact that we got the LCAP done and we were responsive to a number of the issues that came out from to a number of the issues that came out from the committees and the input and public comment and the like, is it still has kind of a laundry list approach to it, where there's a lot of different things that we don't know exactly what's going to attribute to what outcomes. And that our most prioritized students, we need to see movement. And we know the movement doesn't happen tomorrow. But we, you know, we can't, we can't wait. We can't keep waiting. And when I listen to presentations that feel like they were the same presentations we made 12 years ago with the 2020 Vision, we have to see that we're doing something different. And the current LCAP does a little bit of stuff different. But we really, and I really want to applaud the staff for trying to align and doing the work to align the metrics with outcomes and strategies. I don't really want just a lot more interventions. I want a comprehensive approach that's going to directly impact the outcomes. And so I'm hoping that with the mentality that this is a three-year roadmap, that starting next year in preparation in the fall, so that it's not just the PAC and the D-LAC addressing budgetary proposals for supplemental dollars that are reducing, but it's really informing the roadmap, informing the interventions and not just intervention, the acceleration, the cohesion of a curriculum and an instructional practice that is going to have the impact on the prioritized students that we need to have. Our white students are doing well. We want them to continue to do well. But we have to tailor our programs to make sure that our prioritized students are elevated. More than 50% of, you know, meeting the guideline. So I really do appreciate all the work that's been done. I feel like there's a lot more work we need to do and we can't be complacent. We kind of have to hit the ground running when the school year starts about what we need to continue to do. And I really appreciate the approach that that Dr. Reinhardt has around the metrics and looking at measurements and having data that will help inform the decisions that we need to make. And I hope that we build the capacity at the school sites to use that data and to inform their practice. And that we, you know, in our new, Miguel, no, sorry, Ruben, Ruben, I forget his last name.
Aurelio.
Aurelio, you know, can hold our educators, you know, kind of collectively accountable to having the data-driven approach to inform our practice. So I think we have a lot of work to do and I look forward to it.
Thank you, Director Senna. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the Local Control Accountability Plan?
Some moved.
Thank you, Director, I mean, Vice President Brown.
Second.
Second, Director Senna, Ms. Chires.
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Senna?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes. All right. Thank you. And congratulations on passing that, Dr. Stevens. Next, we have the adoption of the 2021-2022 budget.
Thank you very much. I may do something very similar. And I will try really hard not to sort of repeat myself. The budget and the LCAP, of course, are nearly one in the same. The budget that we're passing tonight is the larger general fund budget. It's approximately $100 million. And from this budget comes our core staffing, all of our operational costs. And there are elements of this budget being passed tonight that directly contribute to the goals and action items that are listed in the LCAP. So in addition to passing tonight's budget, I'd like just to sort of provide a recap for all of us, but for members of the community particularly, not only for the decision to be made this evening, but for decisions made by the Board of Education over the last two months. We knew when we began this budget-building process that we would be making a series of decisions across multiple board meetings. And that set, that sort of accumulated set of decisions has resulted in some very positive things coming to Berkeley for the 21-22 school year. So I won't repeat what I listed for the LCAP, but would like to call out a couple of these sort of unique budget decisions that have been made for this year and that I think will contribute to positive growth in the coming year. So it does, this year's budget season includes, among its most dramatic staff expansions, the addition of nine new special education positions for 21-22. We haven't spent a lot of time talking about this particular addition to the Special Education Department. And we've been going about our hiring during the season with the support of the department and human resources. But having these additional case manager positions, speech and language pathologist positions, occupational therapists, will provide a higher level of service and in many cases, a lower caseload for our special education students in Berkeley. I mentioned before the dramatic increase in funding for the Office of Family Engagement and Equity, but we'll call out that this particular budget creates a new director-level position for the OFEE office, which is intended to respond to the community's desire for greater reporting, for district-based family empowerment work, including multilingual work in support of Spanish-speaking families specifically, increased metrics, and increased capacity to sustain partnerships in support of our families. The total contribution to OFEE over the course of the last two years is over $600,000 of new resources infused into this program. Over the course of several board meetings, we've also, excuse me, reinforced and expanded the Bridge Program at Berkeley High School, a program with a very strong track record of college matriculation. In this coming year, the 21-22 school year funding for that program will go, grow by $220,000. This budget also restores funding for the Berkeley Research Evaluation and Assessment, or BREA, department, including re-establishing a director-level position as its leader and returning BREA staffing to pre-2018 levels. This particular budget also provides, or rather, these series of budget decisions has provided for a two-year pilot seven-period day at Longfellow Middle School, which we're all very excited about. And in the coming presentation, we'll hear developing plans for $30 million in modernization and improvement at Longfellow as well. I'd also like to call out that among our budget decisions was moving $2 million towards our schools in the form of restorative restart funding, which is given anywhere between $80,000 and $650,000 to our schools. And this was an equity-based allocation where we allocated $150 per student and an additional $150 per unduplicated student. We are expanding support to our Black Studies Department. And for the first time in that department, we'll have department co-chairs who have release time, just like their colleagues, that we hope is among many actions that will lead to increased leadership of the Black Studies Department and increased cohorting opportunities. As well, through our Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, we've set aside a large amount of money for expanded enrichment with organizations like Young Gifted and Black and others. And we'll add to our current set of partnerships with groups like Camp Edmo and STEM Steps. I'd like to call out as well that this budget increases consent education at Berkeley High School, something we just discussed. And that will include beginning work with consent education specialists next year. We're also adding to the high school a 504 Coordinator, which we're excited will support students with disabilities who are covered through Section 504 of the ADA, the Ethnic Studies Teacher on Special Assignment, as well as BARA contributions to the recruitment and retention of staff of color. So all of this represents very exciting and equity-oriented work. Again, it's not perfect. It's not complete. We have work to do. But as a set of budget decisions, I think they really represent the sort of core values of this board and the staff team and driving towards equity and putting our dollars where our values most lie. So I'll turn it back over to the board for, and recommend that the board approve the 21-22 budget.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. And again, thank you for all that work. And Assistant Superintendent Follinsby for putting the budget together and guiding us through this process.
We should, I should, I was remiss. I should actually call out not only Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsby, but her whole team. It's a little-known fact that they're often having lunch together on Saturdays just to be able to close books and write the budget for the next year. So please know that we see that. There's just been a lot of extra effort going on in the Business Services Office to prepare all of this work.
And it was a monumental amount of work this year with not only the pandemic, but just all of the complicated budget changes and allocations and threatened reductions that we dealt with over the course of the year. So Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, I hope you thank your team on behalf of all of us. Director Babett and then Director Senna.
Yes, I definitely wanted to echo my appreciation to Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsby and her team. And I really enjoy my time with the Audit Committee learning so much and the thoughtful questions and discussions that we get to have in that meeting. So again, thank you for all that work. And then, you know, how you continue to remind us that we have to control our spending, right? And so to that end, I just wanted to really say to my board colleagues, as well as to the superintendent, how we can begin thinking about our guiding questions and guiding principles and some cost-benefit analysis and really making sure that as we build up the data department, that we do it with the lens of evaluating the effectiveness of our programs and program supports. So that when we have to make tough decisions, we can do that based on data. And when we know that there are tough decisions that have to be made, which may have a political value to people, but may not have very much actual impact for students right now in 2021-2022, right? How are we going to start preparing for those conversations and really getting up-to-date information from the community as to is this still an important value that we need to invest in? So that's kind of my thinking around really preparing for the cliff that, hate that word, cliff, but preparing for that end of the road in some of our funding that we really need to start addressing now so that it's not a dramatic impact. Like, where can we start with our organizational planning now to fill some of these needs that we're currently spending so much money to fill? If that makes sense to anyone. So that's just my comment and what I've been really enjoying the discussions with our Audit Committee. So thanks again.
Yeah, I really appreciate those comments, Director Babett. And think it's important that we all keep them in mind. Director Vasudev's internet, wait, she's not here, is she? I think her internet went out. So I'm sure she'll be trying to get back in. In the meantime, Director Senna.
Great. I don't know if she can listen, but maybe if her internet's out, she could call in.
Yeah, I'll try to get in touch with her.
Okay. I have a couple of quick questions. And I probably should have asked this a few weeks ago. But the plans that the schools are submitting for the recovery dollars, I can't remember what they're called.
The restorative restart.
Restorative restart. Good name. Will we get a copy or a summary of the plans? I'd like to know what the schools are doing with the funds.
I'd be happy to share them. We have them all and I can include them.
That'd be great. Maybe in Friday notes, we could get that so we could see what people are doing with them. And then the, I also just want to confirm and maybe for the growing public that are watching our board meetings over the course of these weeks, I appreciate that you just gave us a summary. And just to remind the folks who are listening in, we have been seeing the budget week after week for like the last, I don't know how many weeks. And now we're just kind of doing, and last week was the first reading where we got a lot of input and final recommendations to go into the budget, which you reported went in. So if people are wondering why there's not a full-blown presentation, I think it's because there's been a lot of them. And I believe that the documents are all also on the website. So thank you for doing the summary. I guess I want to confirm, because I don't think I heard you say, but there is still approximately $1.1 million in COVID-ESR dollars that are unallocated, that are to be used between now and 2023 for issues related to like learning loss or family, student strife, you know, challenges that we are facing, not solely due to COVID, but have been exacerbated potentially by COVID. That, that's accurate, right?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. So I just, as we again, kind of going back to the LCAP conversation that we were just having, we've got some time, you know, heading into the fall to continue to look at how we might want to use those dollars either in developing a framework for the Latinx Resolution or developing more comprehensive programming that we didn't get to yet, or that we need to have some of that money go into 22-23. So I just want to remind folks that we still have that to plan out. And it's in the budget. It's just not in the budget on any particular program area right now. Yeah.
All of that is correct. Yeah. And I, in addition to those elements that you just described, it's still the case that we're expecting revised guidance from the CDC and CDPH about the conditions for reopening schools. It may be the case, though, we don't know that there could be additional funding items associated with that revised guidance. So we're wise, I think, just to sort of keep an eye open over the course of the summer, understanding that we have this critical reserve available to us in case we need it.
Right. And we also don't know what the state budget's going to land on. So there's a number of unknowns within that that we won't know until probably the end of August.
That's also true.
I also just want to echo my appreciation and thanks to Assistant Superintendent Follinsby and her team. You guys rock. Thank you for all the work that you do. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. All right. We still have one more reasonably big presentation to go. So Director Vasudev.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for saw me leave for a second. My internet went out, but I'm back. Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that I just cut the tail end of Director Senna's comments. But to think about, you know, additional targeted interventions for our vulnerable student populations, again, you know, budgets tell stories, right? And so we want to make sure that if, when we come back, we have this unallocated million dollars, right, in COVID reserve, that we think about how we are going to have targeted interventions for our Latinx students as part of the resolution, but also more importantly, because we know that the Latinx community has been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. And also for our students with disabilities, I'm very excited by the additional staffing that we have for special education. And it's so important and it's so critical. And they're providing direct services to our students. But I think, you know, our students with disabilities have also been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, right? Like, they had to learn in a whole new way. That's not the way that, it's very hard for many reasons, right? And so I think taking the summer to be thoughtful, and I'm not proposing any numbers, Dr. Stevens, I hear you loud and clear. But I think, you know, taking the summer to think about our most vulnerable students and how we're helping them recover. And I think, you know, that's really important. And in the fall, I would love to see an update on the Latinx Resolution and also targeted interventions for our children with special education needs.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion? To approve the budget?
A motion to approve.
Okay, Director Vasudev moves to approve.
I'll take you.
Second, my Director Babett. Thank you both. Ms. Chires?
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Senna?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. That was easy, Dr. Stevens.
I never doubted.
Yeah. All right. Congratulations to us all for adopting the budget for next year. And now we have a presentation that I'm very excited about. Director Senna and I, as members of the Facility Subcommittee, have seen a preview of this and voted to send it on to the full board for consideration. And we're excited to have Executive Director of Facilities, John Kalis, with us. Dr. Stevens, I don't know if you have anything to say, or should we just turn it over to Mr. Kalis? Director Kalis?
It's actually Executive Director of Facilities and Student Testing. I just want to make that clear. Now, I'm happy to turn it over to John Kalis and welcome, and thanks for all the work that you're about to present.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Actually, Liz, if I could ask for permission there to share my screen? Not yet. Dr. Stevens, are you able to?
We should be able to.
Okay. Yep, I got it now. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. All right. Thank you. So yeah, we're here tonight to talk about Longfellow. So Longfellow was, excuse me, one second, let me advance the slides here. I lost my slide control. There it is. So Longfellow Middle School. Sits on roughly about 1.6 acres. It's a really small campus, but it does serve a large number of students. The need for a upgrade of Longfellow and a modernization has been known. And a parent group advocated to the board in July of last year for some additional funding. And that was discussed and we looked at some projects and we brought some short term projects to the board. And what was really identified within those short term projects, but then also with the school's new leadership. With Principal Furlong was that those projects didn't necessarily represent what was best for the school. They were the short term. They were the quick thinking. So we, what we had done, we worked with the board and the Subcommittee a while back. And we brought on Gould Evans, our, our design partner for this particular project. To really engage in a very rich and meaningful engagement process with all of the Longfellow communities. From the students to the parents, the staff, former families, future families and the outlying or the surrounding community as well. So there were several budgets that were considered when Measure G was put together for, for all of our projects. But at Longfellow in particular, there was an infrastructure budget, which dealt with all of our systems as well as the building envelope. There was a CTE budget, which really would allow us to expand career technical education at the middle school. And then additionally, there was a solar and infrastructure, excuse me, solar and sustainability budget that was allotted for each of our campuses. Those budgets combined with the ad project, the modernization that the board had considered in July of last year. Came out to a total of $22.6 million. When we costed it out, and this was really the infrastructure is what we absolutely have to do. And when we costed that out with what the CTE, the solar, and then the board approved project would be. We came in just underneath or just slightly below that budget. What we had heard though, through the engagement process, and this here is, gives you a sample of what the engagement schedule looked like over several months. Was that there was a lot more work to do beyond doing what we just had to do. Mr. Lachuga mentioned, you know, that was a really rich engagement process where the community was heard. And he also talked about the fact that, and I'll quote him, as Longfellow is a gem. He's absolutely accurate. I'll paraphrase Paz, where what she, what she, what I had heard her talk about was really that. The design team, the facilities team, everyone who participated really made sure to listen and to fully understand. What the communities were asking for. And with that. There were other projects that, that really are other pieces to the project that really came up and sort of floated to the top. So to give you an idea of the engagement process, it was done virtually, but it was community meetings. There were a lot of different surveys that went out and they were very well participated on by both families, staff, as well as students. We talked about student visions. We use digital whiteboards to really capture what folks were looking for. And then bring it back and integrate it to what was reasonable and what we could actually do at that campus. I'm not going to take you through each one of the photos. You guys have had the opportunity to look at this, but it was really creating a heart for Longfellow. It was creating a school with clear programming goals and then the facilities to support them. It was about a welcoming and aesthetically pleasing campus. Right now that the aesthetically pleasing unfortunately is lacking at that campus due to the age of it. And then really just trying to capture and represent the community that that campus serves. Different responses also included healthy and sustainable living. Outdoor athletic and physical education spaces, multi-use athletic fields as well as modernization of existing buildings and. Really touching all of the classrooms that are within those buildings. So what the design team had come up with was really just, and we would refer to this as a bubble diagram. Was really a representation of what this campus could look like. And how we can set, set it aside where we, how we could set aside different areas of the campus, rather, excuse me. To represent the sixth grade, the TWI program, the garden, which that school absolutely loves, a new play yard. STEM and student hubs, as well as areas for students to come together and collaborate and work as well as staff. What we also captured was the need to, to create an area as like a family resource center, something that we've been able to do over at Rosa Parks. And what we want to do over at Longfellow as well. So with that, one of the, one of the items that was identified was just the entry to the campus. It's very small. It's very much a bottleneck. It's not necessarily aesthetically pleasing. But it's also a little bit of a safety, a safety problem in the sense of that. The, the main office is really set aside from it and access to that campus is quite open without any type of access control. A breezeway was identified as a desire of once you enter the campus, so you're not directly exposed to the elements. Refreshing the administration spaces to go along with that. Bike parking was a big thing. Number four was really just about an area for students, staff and families to congregate outside of the school. And then number five is just about the sustainability and the healthy living. Family Resource Center was a large piece that was talked about as a way to not only serve our students. But also to serve the community and the families. And we were able to identify some space that could be turned into that. Student hub and common areas. Longfellow does not have lockers. They don't necessarily have common areas for students to come together or even small group instruction to happen. So we were able to identify space for that. And then the site improvements, we've all seen the site. Currently, the students run around the block. During PE, there is a need for a new field. We have a lot of drainage problems with the existing field that's there. Athletic courts. And there was also a real desire to see a climbing wall out there for students. So when we looked at these additional asks, and these are the. The projects that really turn this modernization into what we absolutely have to do to pushing it to what we should do as well. The delta came out to be about seven and a half to 7.8 million dollars. So we went back and we looked at the Measure G budget sheet that we have. And the projects that we have and the plan for funding and, and we did identify that we can actually fully fund this project with the approval of the board. And what that would do is that would transform this from a $22 million project over four separate budgets. To actually adding that additional 7.5 million, which would turn it into a $30.2 million project. That's total project cost, which does, it does include all of our construction hard costs as we refer to them. As well as the soft costs that go along with that. There was also a lot of discussion during the engagement process, but also with the board. About short term projects and what we could do. There were two that were identified. The first of which was exterior painting of the campus. And the second project was really dealing with landscaping, drought tolerant plants and irrigation. And just beautifying the campus. While these are short term projects that we can do. As the facilities director, I would actually advise against doing these at this time. The reality is, is that the, the buildings have been painted recently, some of them in the last several years. And part of the modernization project on the infrastructure side would include building envelope as new as new windows. And what that means is that the paint that we would be putting on, we would then be disturbing and trying to color match later. Similarly, with the planting and the irrigation and the landscaping that would take place. While the architect has been able to identify certain areas that won't necessarily be interfered during construction. The reality is, is during construction, more often than not, things do have to get excavated that aren't necessarily in the original plans. I include this as part of the presentation so the community understands that we did hear them and we really understand the desire to do these short term projects. But I would be remiss if I honestly said that I, I think we should. I think we should do it as a complete modernization, but we should be smart about how we spend the money and I don't want to see us spend the money twice. The last slide here just takes us through a potential schedule for that. So this would be a long term project, meaning from the time of board approval, which will hopefully be tonight. To the closeout would be approximately 45 months. The construction would take place from the summer of 2023 to the beginning of 2025. We've spoken with Principal Furlong about this and Principal Furlong is very confident. That he can work through the construction with the existing space that he has at the campus and that it would be worth it to do that. So with that, I will stop sharing. I will open it up for any questions. And what I'd also like to say is that. The principal from Gould Evans, the architect who drove this is in the audience. If you have any questions for her. She, we can definitely promote her to panelist. And I know Paz was very, very much involved. During all of the community engagements. So if there's questions directly about the community engagement that I can answer, we can bring her up as well.
Thank you, Director Kalis. I really appreciate it. And I just want to frame this, the conversation or. And then I guess the, this is an action item, actually. Briefly. And I guess, so I just want to, well, what I want to appreciate this work and, and express my support for it. As. To me, this is, this is a, an example of sort of equity in practice. We have a school that has. The disproportionate number of our prioritized students and it has, it has for years. And we're, we're being asked to approve an increased allocation to ensure that the school grounds. Are safe, modern, attractive. Facilitative of the educational program that we want, wanted that school. And to me, it seems like a, a perfect and appropriate use of the additional funds that were, that you were able to find in the, in the Measure G budget. And so. I really appreciate the, the. The, the work that it took to figure out a way to make what really needs to happen. You said what, what should happen, you know, really what should and needs to happen at Longfellow to make that school facility what we want it to be. What, and so just to be clear that what you're asking us for is the approval of the, of the additional funds. That will then give you the, the sort of. Overall budget that you've reflected in the presentation. But we're still at the, and even though there's a lot of community work that's gone into it. We're not approving the specific things that you outlined in the presentation. We're not approving. Lockers necessarily, we're not approving. You know, where the garden is going to be or any of that. I mean, are those two things right? That what you're asking us for is to approve the budget. And that, and that the design process will go through continued community process over the course of the next months.
And that is correct. Yeah. With the approval of the budget, we will actually go to contract to begin design. And a good piece of that design work includes more community engagement and listening. And it's also answering questions that we discussed at the Facility Subcommittee, for example, the lockers, which we've already looked into. So yeah, with the approval of the budget, we would move to a contract with Gould Evans. To design this school that would include further community engagement. We would have discussions with Subcommittee throughout the design process, the schematic design process, which is really the first step. And then with all of our projects, we bring the schematic design to board for approval. With an updated budget at that time, which typically does reflect the early budget, which we're showing to you now. And then we would move further through our design development and our construction documents.
Okay, thanks. So as I, as I turn it to my colleagues for comments and questions, I'm going to encourage you all to. Resist the urge to get into the weeds of, of proposals for specific things on the site because. That will, and I think should come through the community process that Director Kalis just mentioned. It doesn't mean you can't. Mention a thought or a question that you have, but if we, I, I would encourage us to avoid, avoid that and let it, let that go through the, the process. Partly in just of time tonight and partly to respect that community process. Okay, Director Babbitt, Sinai and Vassidav.
Thank you so much and thank you for, for this work. I think one of the first meetings I ever sat in with you. John Kalis was during Longfellow Community Engagement Process many years ago. So it's very nice to see this come before the board in such a dynamic way. My question is around if the timeline. So if you're in sixth grade now, what can you expect by the time you're in eighth grade to? To be able to enjoy at Longfellow? And I think this is also important to our middle school assignment. Process because we know that some people don't choose to go to Longfellow Middle School because they choose the facilities at other. Middle schools. And so I really just couldn't tell from the presentation, like what. Benchmarks are, can, can we expect to be hit in the next, even over this summer to the next year and the next year?
No, it's a great question. It's a thoughtful one and I appreciate it. If you're in the sixth grade, you will be involved with the, the engagement process that will happen, which will include students. I've spoken with our design team as well as with Principal Furlong about throughout different iterations of design. About doing some renderings, you know, having things like that up in the school. Unfortunately, you will not see the construction. If you're in the sixth grade, you won't see the construction prior to your completion there. I'll go back to put that schedule up for one moment. But the, the design process as it is with the Division of State Architect. So the design criteria that we're held to is much more stringent and there is a process for that. And then there's also a fairly long approval time. So what that means is by approving now essentially July of 2021. With schematic design, which includes all of the community engagement as well as design development. We're looking at really probably February of 2022, prior to that being completed. Construction documents, which is then taking all of those early thoughts, all those early pieces of design. And refining them into a perfect set of documents to go to the state architect for approval. We anticipate submitting to DSA in approximately one year from now, which would be July of 2022. DSA on a project this size, we can anticipate six to seven months of a turnaround process for approval. And then from there, it's typically about a three to four month process for the entire bid to go through. From putting together all the specifications, packaging it as a big document. Advertising the bid as we're required to do through law, soliciting bids and then choosing them. So what that means is unfortunately, if you're in the sixth grade now, construction isn't going to begin until July of 2023, tentatively. So you'll be able to sort of see the coming soon, but you won't see the, the, the fruit of that work really until its completion. Or throughout the work and the completion would be scheduled for early 2025.
So. My concern is the low hanging fruit, right? Like the playground, right? Like we've had kids running around the block for years. Are you telling me that's a 2023, 2024 goal? Like that can't be done over the summer sooner?
So when it, so it can't be done over the summer just because it would, doing that work. Requires approval from the state architect as well. They have to look at it from an accessibility standpoint. And that's the first thing that they're going to look at it. So it does require architectural drawings. To be go through the three iterations of design to go to the state for approval and then to be bid and to be done. The earliest that could be dumber, could be done would actually be next summer. That being said, when you consider the other work that has to be done on campus. And the interruption to the campus physically, right? To the, the interruption to the physical property of the campus to do that work. To do that ahead in advance of the other construction. Wouldn't be fiscally responsible in the sense of that much of the work that we would be doing, we may be damaging during other parts of the construction.
Okay, thank you very much. And my last comment is I wouldn't want. Extensive. Community engagement, only because I've been a part of extensive communication, community engagement around Longfellow facilities for at least five years to continue to. Delay this project. So I don't know the risk of. Hearing more people ask for the same things.
No, I, I understand.
We're not meeting kids' needs sooner.
Yeah. And when we talked about that to Principal Furlong, you know, his feeling was even that the community had been engaged and they felt that they. you know, his feeling was even that the community had been engaged and they felt that they had been heard and it was, it was time to move this on and we all agreed on that. The community engagement that's set to come is really just to share with the community what we're, what we've captured through their asks, right? And to make sure that we've captured that in design in the beginning set of schematic design to make sure that it is captured, to make sure we didn't miss anything. And it's really to make sure that they understand where we are also. Facilities work takes a long time in planning. And from, from, you know, the community standpoint, without that engagement, that can be frustrating and we recognize that. So part of the community engagement, yes, it's to make sure to listen and really make sure that we've captured everything, but it's also to update them. So we want them to know where we are with the work and what the projects are that are forthcoming.
I mean, what I hear Director Rabbit also saying is sort of if there's anywhere in that timeline that can be shaved down.
Yeah.
The community would probably appreciate faster timeline and less presentations.
Understood.
As long as they kept in the loop. Because we did, I mean, I think we should, we should own the fact that we did. I don't know if promise is the word, but we did, we did convey to the community that, that there would be lower hanging fruit, faster, short term projects that would be done. This is a much more sooner than now or by now. This is a much more exciting, comprehensive vision for the school, but the current sixth graders, I mean, I guess if they like watching construction, they'll get to see that, but they're not going to get to the benefit of the seeing this completed for a couple of, while they're in the school. That's something that we should just be transparent with the community about.
Completely understandable. And yeah, we did talk about that lower, that lower hanging fruit and trying to tackle that. But what was clear through the assessment that was done and through engaging the community was that a lot more was needed. And that's where this project grew as we discussed in the subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I appreciate that. Director Sinai, then Director Vasudev, and then we'll give Vice President Brown, who graduated from Longfellow, right? The last word. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Executive Director Kalis, for all the work and the work that the consultants have done on this. I think you've, you've really listened to what the community has been asking for. I think one of the challenges with middle school is a three year timeframe. Students are in and out. So when you go or look at a construction project, there's almost no way you can start a construction. I mean, just think about when we did the cafeteria in the kitchen. You know, it's like students who started there didn't necessarily get to see the fruition of it. Construction, especially in schools, just takes so darn long. What I really like about this approach is that it completely fits with our long term vision of equity among our middle schools. And patchwork, as much as it helps in the short term, we know it doesn't, it doesn't help in the long term. So I really support the extra allocation of dollars to do this right and to do this with a long term vision. I would love, I'm, I'm not interested. I mean, I'm not, not interested. I'm, I'm hesitant. I hear your concern about doing some beautification now. I'm, I'm not ready to completely give that up, especially if there are ways that we can make it more inviting. That isn't super expensive. And if it gets trashed due to staging, you know, in three years, it's three years where the students who are there get to feel a little bit more respected. Cause we know facilities has a dramatic impact on how people feel respected within the school system. So but I'm very supportive of the, the additional dollars and I think the design is developing into a really exciting middle school and is a very small footprint. And so there's not a whole, I mean, there's no way we can compare it to King or Willard. It just doesn't have the footprint. But what the, what the consultants did with the footprint that it does have is pretty exciting. So anything we can do in between, I agree with Director Babett would be great as long as it's not, you know, breaking the bank. But I think having the long, the long, the long haul picture is what we really need to do to make it right for our kids in the district over, you know, over, over the long term. And I think one of the things we really need to do is shot the, the, the schematics to our third graders, to our fourth graders and the ones who are going to be coming in, you know, in the assign, in the, in the revised whatever student assignment in the coming time, in the coming time. So thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to move it when we get there.
Okay. Well, I'm hoping that we'll get there pretty soon. Director Vasudev and then Vice President Brown.
I'll speak really fast, President Albert.
Take your time.
Director Kalis, thank you so much for your great work. And I also just want to echo like, I, I was impressed with the community engagement that took place right now to the existing community, right? Like I got to see some of it unfold at the Club de Padres meeting. It was really exciting. Obviously hearing Ms. Melendez Canales' comments, I can tell you that it was, it was diverse, that it was multilingual. And I think there was a lot of great things that happened with the community engagement. My concern though, I also want to echo, it's really hard to follow Director Sinai because I feel like she says a lot of the things that I want to say, but I, I really want to echo the importance of reaching out to the kids that will be there when the project is complete, right? The third, the fourth, the fifth graders. It seems like we didn't reach out to those student populations, correct?
No, it was primarily to the Longfellow community and it was open to the community at large. And I know we did see some smaller children there, but it, it's act, it's a, it's a good point that both you and Director Sinai are making and it's definitely being heard. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, because as part of our, you know, there's two things happening at the same time where we're upgrading this amazing school community, but we're also trying to engage the community around the middle school assignment system. So I feel like it's, it's kind of a lost opportunity that we didn't engage those younger grades. And I am in favor of always, whenever we can, as fast as possible, trading blacktop for green top. And so I'm also concerned about, you know, I understand your concerns about, you know, front loading some of those, you know, greening expenses right now in, in the construction project. I get what you're saying and I hear what you're saying. That the order of operation is really important, but I do want the students that are there to feel pride. And right now politically, we're in a place where students and communities are asking for more outdoor learning spaces, right? And so anything that we can do, I just want us to be creative and to really try to, you know, try to, try to be flexible on this point. Anything that we can do to create an inviting, you know, green outdoor space for our students right now, for the ones that are there, so they can see some of that benefit, I think will be great. That, that gives you a sense of pride. I can go to King and see how proud they are of their green space and, and I want the same for our Longfellow students. And so you know, wherever there's flexibility in the project, I would like to just push us to really, you know, front load some of those expenses. I know they're cosmetic for some people, right? And like that things might change during the construction process. But I really want our kids to get the benefit as soon as possible. But I, I also want more comprehensive community engagement for the ones that are there. I think there's a way that we can do both, Director Kalis.
Yeah. And real quickly, we did talk with the design, with the design team about possibly rolling this project out in increments. So what that means is that working with them, once we begin schematic design, if we really feel that we can take care of the green space or the field, for example, and do that without having a detrimental effect on it or a high cost effect on it later, then we can roll that as, out as an increment to do it earlier. I'm hesitant to commit to that now just because we haven't even began to, began to work on the plans. But it is conversations that we have already begun to have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Brown, with our last question.
Thank you. I apologize because we are literally going to sound like broken records saying the same things or similar things, but thank you, Director Kalis, for your presentation and also for your, your hard work on this. And for, for making the priority. We all know that school facility conditions really impact, impact education equity. And so in showing that this is a priority for our incoming students who will be incoming to, to Longfellow is great, but also I just want to echo my board colleagues that we are, we're similarly concerned about our students now and their experience, especially coming out of, of a global pandemic. And so my question was just in, in response to our students returning of what more can be done currently? And also in this present, two more things in this presentation, which was really great. One thing that I didn't hear was about additional safety measures that will be taken or things that will be a part of the plan that will ensure that the school is a safer place and around the community. And in addition to the modern, modernization that's happening in the school, how will the modernization reflect the students who are there? Is it through murals? Is it through additional posters that provide, you know, culturally responsive artwork? What's, what's the plan? And on top of that, another question which we could address later, if you, if you'd like, is around the longevity of the new furniture for the facilities. That's a, a concern because we're spending a lot on, and I just want to make sure they will last for years and years and years to come.
I'm going to try to capture all those questions, but if I miss any, please let me know. So on the safety and security, one of the primary issues that has been identified there right now is the main entrance to the school. How when you come in there, it really doesn't take you through that, the administrative office. There's actually in the bubble diagrams, what's indicated and what's shown there is actually a build out of the front space that would create an open breezeway. It would actually, it would actually sort of divert visitors to the campus to bring them through the main offices, which would deal with safety and security. Additionally, there's a secondary student annex that's being cut through, through the sixth grade annex that would create a safer pathway to the new street crossing that we've installed to bring them over to the dining commons across the street. But it would also create a clear line of sight. So what it does is once that street is closed and those gates are up, it now brings the dining commons, that cafeteria to be a part of that campus. So it really all ties it all together. And now you have truly controlled access. So it's addressing safety from the, to, to, to really represent the diversity that goes through that school. That was one of the things that was shown. And right now in the early stages of planning, you know, we recognize the importance of recognizing the cultural diversity and celebrating what we have here in Berkeley. So with that, there is murals, there's different gathering areas. It's really just about the use of paint, the use of murals and just engaging with our community, which the design team has done to understand what it is that, that everyone is looking for and what's important to them. Both the students, the staff and the community. It's creating that family resource center to have an opportunity to bring the families into the school. So we're trying to do that. On the longevity of the furniture, all the furniture that we have been purchasing, we have several different manufacturers that we work with, but it's all specifically designed for K twelve. It's unfortunately very expensive, but the longevity of it is actually really good. It lasts. And we've had furniture in place in some places for well over fifteen years that's still in relatively good shape, other than perhaps cosmetic things that have been caused by students and staff and just excessive use. Overall, it works. It's, it's the right products that we use. Did I capture all of your questions?
You did. And the first question was more so just in addition to what my board colleagues were saying about what can be done now. So there's no need to readdress that again. I just wanted to highlight it.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So Director Sinai, you wanted to make the motion?
On behalf of the facilities committee, we would love to make the motion to approve the, the budget for the Longfellow. Is that the right? Is that what I'm saying? It's the budget?
The budget and the overall project, yes.
Budget and the overall project for the Longfellow modernization.
Can I second?
Yes.
And now on behalf of the facilities committee, but this is another.
Non-facility subcommittee members of the board. Second by Director Vasudev. Ms. Chires?
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Simon?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Albert?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would be remiss to not thank my team. Shanita Stevenson, our consultants, Ellen Clements from Van Pelt. They've all put a ton of work into this and I just wanted to take one more moment to thank all of them for everything that they've done.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank them on behalf of us as well too, please. Director Kalis. All right. Y'all are about to witness some very good time management here. Our first public hearing, I'm going to open. This is item thirteen point four. Public hearing for the approval of the, and entering into an energy services contract with Schneider Electric for the Berkeley High Natatorium Project. If anybody is here to speak on that particular issue, now is the time to raise your hand. Not surprised that nobody's raising their hand. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion? I need to stall for three minutes. Is there a motion to approve this, um, this resolution?
Sure, I'll move it.
Okay. Vice President Sinai, is there a second?
Thought you needed us to stall.
Well, I you can, no one seconded it yet. We can, you can wait a couple of minutes. Everyone, why don't we take a minute to stretch? In the audience, you two can stretch. All right. I think I'm, I think I'm ready for, for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Vice President Brown, Ms. Chires, you can slowly call the roll.
Yes. Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Hmm, let me think about this for a minute. Yes.
Okay. Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Albert, we think about this and take your time.
I'm going to see what time, what is the official time?
Nine thirty. It's nine twenty seven now.
Nine twenty seven. Don't get ahead of yourself, Ms. Chires. You're the one who set this public hearing, the next one at nine thirty. Okay, I will vote yes on item thirteen point four as well. Congratulations, Director Kalis. You've, you've gotten your approval for the energy services contract. Once again, it's the energy services contract with Schneider Electric for the Berkeley High.
What is it again?
It's just for the, the Natatorium. I'm sorry. Sorry, President Albert. It's for the Natatorium.
The, yes, but to enter into, and just to make sure, and I know Berkeley side is here to get this down right, the energy services contract with Schneider Electric. All right, that brings us to plus nine thirty, nine twenty eight. I think, I think by, I have a watch that says nine thirty. So I'm going to open the next public hearing. Item fourteen point one, this is a public hearing for the disclosure on BOSD's reserve. This one is not an action item, right? Assistant Superintendent Falmse. Okay. So we are, all we're doing is opening the public, opening it up for public hearing. Is there public comment on the disclosure of our reserve? Thank you for putting this together, Assistant Superintendent Falmse. I don't see anybody here for public comments. I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. We did that. Now is the, thank you. Good timing, Ms. Chires. And now is the opportunity to give extended public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment. Now's your chance because we're about to adjourn. All right. Oh, Dr. Gallegos Castillo got her hand in just under the wire. All right, Dr. Gallegos Castillo, you have three minutes and you will be our only public speaker. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, yes, there she is. Okay.
Oh, I just couldn't pass up this opportunity to say thank you to all of you. I know how much time, dedication, emotional effort sometimes it takes to really be on the dais, be in service to community. And so I just wanted to extend my utmost gratitude to you all. And that I am looking forward to a renewed regenerate, regen, regenerated. And I hope you all get rest in the next month so that we can start all over again and enjoy your vacations.
Thank you so much. That was very nice of you to say. We appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations on passing the budget and the Al Cap, Dr. Stevens and all of us. Director Kalis, thank you for your presentations and Assistant Superintendent Falmse, Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinosa. Ms. Chires, thank you for all your work facilitating these meetings. You don't show your face, but we know you're there and these meetings could not happen without you. So we're very grateful to you. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Night. Thank you.